Okay, being seven oh two, I'll bring the Dunbar and Board of Selectment meeting to order. All three selectmen present. Town administrators here tonight. We've got Fred Mullin videotaping for the public, and Lyndon Nickerson will upload that to the town website. Okay, I'm gonna come into old business to start with, gentlemen.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of July twenty four, twenty twenty five as amended.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made, second any discussion?
No further discussion.
Okay, motion's been made, second, no discussion, all clear? Okay, that being said, first person on the agenda tonight, uh, first, I'm gonna open up to public comment. Anybody that's not on the agenda that'd like to bring something up, but not stay for the entire meeting? Go ahead, say your name.
I have a question about the water at the town hall.
Name an address for me, for the record.
We're recording it, so just name, we'll.
Jody Warner, Montalone Road.
Okay, Jody, go ahead.
I just had a question about the water spigot at the town hall, if it is public water, you know, public use?
Yeah.
Or is it any, you know, just like a yes or no, or?
Um, we never, at least since I've been here ten years, haven't been asked about it. I know the garden club uses it out there, and, um, I think if it's. If it's not, um, a big use, you know, like filling up a big tank, I don't see any issue with it. Lee, you have anything, President's in the house?
So, I asked Dave, um, Jody to show up here and speak to the board as a, a board, um, because I observed him filling a fifty-five gallon drum, um, with water, and when I approached him, I asked him what he was using water for, and he said he was using it for his garden. So, in the past, I've been here for twenty-two years, we've had one season of drought, where this board is a board, said that we would open up the spigot for people who have dug wells or have any problems with water, to take reasonable amount of water for consumption. Uh, the water is treated, and more so currently, we have a water softening system. That spigot is not separate from the water softening system, it goes through that whole system. So, I just had some concerns as to whether fifty-five gallon drum weekly for a garden was a, a reasonable use.
Now, it is typical to bypass the outside spigot, do you know if they did it or not?
They did not.
That means it, does it go through the R O, too?
Yeah, so we could, we could maybe even address that.
But you think, does it go through the R O?
That's a question I have.
It does, they didn't do anything special about any of the spigots.
But the R O is very, like, capacity limited normally, or a water softener wouldn't be.
They might have done it regardless of whether we asked them to do it or not, they might have done it by, you know, doing it every day. Capital well did the system. Maybe we should ask that question to Capital Well and see how high, how high would it be to bypass that outside spigot, cause.
I think, I think, uh, if it is, it would be reasonable to restrict it. If it's not, then I'd say, that's open, see, I have no issue with that. But if it's treated water, I would have an issue with that, because that's an expense of pumping it, that's an expense of.
So, you, you call it an R O?
So, there's two things, the water softener treating of it, and then the reverse osmosis? I'd be highly suspicious if it is reverse osmosis.
No, that, they, they installed that in the bubbler in the, in the addition.
That would make sense.
So, it's just salt water?
So, it's going through the water softener treatment.
Yeah, and that would eat up salt, that may not be good for your garden, too, if it's a salt water.
Right.
So, that's where.
Water, that wouldn't.
Yeah, it's not actually.
Oh, we would like to have the outside spigot.
Chemically, uh, it's, it's not salty.
So, why don't we call Capital Well and see if it is, um, the outside spigot is bypassed? If it isn't, maybe we should do that.
Yeah.
If it's not much money.
If it's not much, yeah.
So, add a bypass for the outside building spigot?
Yeah.
Yeah, most homes are, are plumbed that way also. Now, when you put a water softener into a home or R O, they'll bypass the outside spigots. And it's, it's a very common question that the installers will ask.
Okay.
Just something to add, when I was growing up in the nineteen sixties and seventies, going my age, I remember there was some limited use, that for residences around the town common, I remember Mrs. Dodds, she lives over there next to Furios, she would go over to that spigot up inside the town hall, and she would fill up a pan, or like a pot, and bring it back to her house, I, I guess because she didn't have plumbing. So, I know there was some, I thought there was some agreement, that some of the people in the town common could get water from that. So, I know people don't do it.
They probably did something similar, came and approached the selectman at the time and asked for permission to do it.
So, the history that I have with the town common and the water is that we were all on that well.
Oh.
As time has gone on, every single one of these properties has their own well now.
Okay.
There's nobody that uses it besides this building, which is plumbed underneath the common area, the library, and the fireplace. So, those are the three buildings we're currently using.
What you found sounds.
Around the same well?
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, there are?
Yeah, yeah.
And the other lines, we used to go out, if you go downstairs, look, they went across the street to the homes.
Go on.
Over here in the common, and those have been snipped off. Fred?
Yeah, years ago, with Fred Mullin from Stock Lane, with, uh, Lee's referring to all these houses used to be on the town well, and then the state says any place that feeds ten or more places is classified as a public water supply, and you get more and more restrictions on it. So, that's when they made everybody get their own wells, but the fire department's still on, fire police department's still on it, in these buildings.
And that softener system was dominated by Capital Well at the nice.
Oh, wow, I mean, where is the well headed?
Inside the basement of the library.
Oh, it is, inside?
I thought it was on that, that concrete thing.
Now, there's, there's a bump, a bump out, and you can take the concrete top off that ground level, and it's right there.
Yeah.
That's the answer.
So, it is, it is, uh, you can reach it from the basement, but you can't reach it from the cover on that end of the building, which would be the south end, I guess.
Yeah, you'd have to go down to your waist, cause it's four feet down.
Yeah.
Thing is, in, in the event that it's, uh, is softened, I like the idea of, of putting a bypass in there. That way we would make the water available to the public, I have no issue with that. But the thing is, I don't necessarily wanna have, uh, softened water be open to the public, because that's an added expense for the town.
Also, when the garden club waters the plants around the town hall, that's a waste to have that salt water in there, you know, and it's not good for the plant, so.
Amen. No, you're homeless either.
Just to clarify, you're, I'd only put like thirty gallons in, because if I fill it up, it slosh all over the place.
Yeah.
And they have exaggerated my many trips. I think I've gone there three times this year.
But it's good to know, we should know, so we can give you a, so you can make an informed decision.
I have a, a gutter set up, catches the rainwater, but it hadn't rained like three weeks or so, so, I'm going to get like thirty gallons of water.
Yeah, I think if we have to put a bypass in, it's a very simple plumbing thing.
But when you say put a bypass, put a ball valve, that way?
No, well.
That way, again, if it comes to the need that people do need to drink the water, they can, they can use the, the potable water.
So, have it do both?
Correct.
It used to be a little sign, you have to.
So, you're saying that it's not, it's not potable?
That's right.
The softener going, doesn't make it.
Not there now.
No, we have.
No, because. So, with the softener, it's more than likely potable.
Not as much as you think, that's why we put the R O.
Well, I finished, my thought, if it's softened, it's more potable, then it would be possibly a bypassing. That's my point.
Okay.
That's all I'm trying to say.
Okay, and that's John Traxler, just for the record.
John Traw, you're.
The water softener takes the iron out, which is mostly put to, uh, reduce the staining on all your sinks and toilets and all that stuff, too. So, that's why I.
Okay, so, that's why I thought.
So, keep it on the subject here.
Or not necessarily pot, making it pot.
Yeah.
But again, but still, better.
I don't need the aggravation.
So, Lee, keep it on the subject here, we're gonna, uh, contact Capital Well, sooner would be to make sure that that is bypassed, if it's not.
Yeah.
And get an estimate back for our next meeting, and then we'll give Jody a call, let him know it's in place, and I don't think we have an issue with you putting thirty gallons in there, we just wanna make sure we're not paying for the softener material.
I appreciate it very much.
Okay, thank you for coming in.
It's no good idea, I'd go down to Kimball's with five gallon buckets, you know.
Right.
It was easy, go to the library, and get a little water.
Get a book to go home.
Somebody just walked into the selectman's office.
They're having a meeting.
They're having a meeting there.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jody, take care.
Have a good meeting.
Thanks, John.
Okay, anybody else have a public comment tonight before the meeting starts? Okay, that being said, we'll close public comment and go into town business. Uh, we have, uh, Jeff Traxler here, or is it Jeff Traw here? Town Office Assessment.
It's John Traxler.
I'll hide you somehow, I will. Um, we, we have an old report here from many years ago, that I think we've all looked at before in the past, and Dave, I'm sure he was looking at this, um, currently. So, um, I think it's on the agenda, because we've talked about maybe we do it last year, the year before, try to get an idea of, uh, possibilities for this building, I guess, I'm not sure.
So, I, I was approached by Lee a few months ago, um, she, um, has some ideas about doing some renovations in the building, and, um, some of it may involve some structural work, and first, first question she asked, are you retired yet? And I'm like, I'm almost, a little bit left, and, um, tired. But, and, and we dug out this, this information, I was part of the nineteen ninety-seven Space Needs Committee that looked at, you know, the space needs in the community center here, and then the two thousand and, you know, two thousand Dunbar and Center Planning Committee, we're trying to figure out what we're doing with the library, and the town hall, and the town office building. And, um, I had done this report, uh, for that Dunbar and Planning Committee, Dunbar and Center Planning Committee, and, and went through the attic, went through the basements as best I could, just doing a visual assessment, and wrote down some notes and so forth. Um, and identified, as you can see if you've read the report, a number of issues with the bones of the building. And these aren't bones that are healing over time, like your arm might be a break it, these are bones that are probably getting worse. So, the question is, if you do intend on doing some significant renovations to this building, should you approach, you know, these structural issues first, and try to make sure that we're on a good foundation, good framing, before you invest a lot of money in it? If it's just minor, you know, partition stuff, we've gone twenty-three years since I wrote the report, nothing's fallen in yet, doesn't mean something's not gonna fall in this winter, or that foundation wall right behind you is not gonna cave in the next time we get a good frost? Don't know. But, wanted to bring it to your attention, um, as, as the selectman, if you do intend on doing anything with this building, consider that there are some underlying issues that are, you should get.
Right. Yeah, I know there was some talk about moving some heavier safes around in the town clerk's office, and I went under there, I didn't suggest moving them, because there's not proper structure to, to move those. Now, they have been in the area, they have for a long time?
Yeah.
And is that safe? Probably isn't perfect, but like you said, it hasn't gone anywhere in many, many years, so we left well enough for a while.
If it's, if it's something simple, like moving some of those heavy, what we call a patch load around, and we need to reinforce the floor to handle that, you know, fine, I can help you out with something like that. If you do wanna get into more of the, you know, we gotta do something about the foundation, and we got some roof framing issues, and we know we got floor framing issues, I would probably recommend, uh, some structural engineers for you, cause I think that's probably beyond what I wanted to get into at this point in my very dwindling career.
It, it comes to a point where, where it becomes a money pit versus we invest in a new building.
Yeah.
And, um, uh, you know, we've had town officials who have made suggestions on how we can use the town common, and this can be used up until the point we build something new. In other words, where's it become the break-even point, where, how much do we wanna put down into this old structure, which has really no historical value, basically three pieces put together?
Yeah, and, and the Dunbar and Center Planning Committee, you know, went through a lot of those gyrations back in the early two thousands, and made some recommendations to the town, um, about consolidating both town offices and the library, and the utilization of the second floor, all on that, on the town hall building, and essentially mothballing this one, or maybe tearing down the, the old, the newer two-thirds, and keep the original third for historical reasons or whatever. Those are big steps, and that requires, you know, a big community input. Yeah, um, but you, you're right, you know, how much do you wanna put in? You can certainly keep going on the path you're at, and, and hope nothing happens. My opinion, hope isn't a very good plan.
Well, I think the first step, too, is to start getting some money set aside, that we have some buildup of some, you know, capital improvement money, to do something in the future, if that was a need. First, we have to determine that need, and then set that money aside, uh, for several years, and try and save some of that impact to the tax rate.
Even if, so, if anything were from like five to ten years, if you start planning now, it's gonna be beyond my time as a selectman, but I think it's, uh, but I think is we could be thoughtful of the future.
Start squirreling money away.
And you know, part of, part of the land purchase up here was part of that stepping, you know, stone for the town to think, so, I'm, I'm probably not gonna be around when they use the land.
Yeah.
I, I will be in town, but not as a selectman, I'm thinking, and just like Mike said, that was a good idea for the, uh, for the town to have that to, to, for future growth, you know.
Yeah, and, and, you know, as, as our town administrators here, um, you've gotta make some decisions about this building, is it large enough? Does it meet the needs, will it meet the needs the next ten, twenty years, or are we gonna be?
Push out the sea.
Pushing out walls, and then, then you're talking a bigger project, do you really add on before you start fixing it up? Or do you, you know, go someplace else and, and say goodbye to this one as a, as an officer? So, these are questions you folks need to address at some point.
Yeah.
Um, I'm certainly happy to help out, Lee, if there's some minor things in here, some shifting of, of some of the loading and so forth. If we're gonna get into the bigger project, I'm.
The town clerk, we have wanted to move some stuff in her office, I think, where we can coordinate with that, and think about that done.
Yeah.
Do we know if anything was ever done, um, some of the simpler stuff that you mentioned in here, you know, do some blocking or extra ties in different areas, since this was?
As far as I know, none of that work has been done, um, there has been some work done in the center section, uh, in the floor. I think, uh, Lee indicated they cut up the flooring at one point, and jumped down in there and added some supports in some places.
Yeah, when I looked at it, there was some supports and, um, also, they did, uh, put poly down, and stone through a big area of it down there now, it's very, very dry down there now.
And that's key, I mean, if you can keep it dry, that'll help them reduce any.
You guys are running dehumidifiers down in that lower section?
That's still going down on an automatic basis, and we have a, a dehumidifier down there, but.
So, between that and the poly and the stone they put down there, it's, it's much better thinking than, than I ever thought it would be down there.
But the repairs that we made in the middle on the floor joists have kind of returned. So, there is, it's not as pronounced as it was before the repair, but there is definitely a hump in the town clerk's department. She's gonna put a chair over the biggest part of that.
And, and it appears that that hump in the floor is where they added support, and the stuff around it is continuing to sag and to settle out.
Which would be talking a hundred and something year old building, couple hundred years old?
Yeah, eighteen sixty-two or four for the initial section, nineteen thirty-four, I think, for the middle section, and fifty-two, I think, for this section. I did take a quick look out back here, and, you know, the grade is still very high against the foundation here, which is, you know, providing moisture to your wood framing, or on the ceiling, and so forth.
Kind of how they built them back, and we have, we did, uh, put stone around the building, which helped a little bit.
Yeah.
And added to it a couple of years back now, so, we've done some small upgrades. We did gutter systems, I think, on the building, we did new roof. So, we're doing some, some things to keep the building functioning.
It might be a good idea to, to get another look into this crawl space, I was really concerned about the concrete block foundation on this north side. The whole top course was pushing in twenty-three years ago. And that could be a really big issue, you know, with three feet outside the wall, you've got Deacon Mills sitting, you know, in his final resting place, so. They may wanna take a look, see if that's gotten worse, uh, and, and that may require more immediate, at least bracing or something, to keep that concrete block from caving in.
And we've added pest control around the building as well, we've had different items coming in and out, so that's helped a lot. Well, thanks for your report, Jeff, appreciate you coming in to go through it with us, and, uh, definitely, we will be, if we do anything major, any major wall moves or whatever, we'll.
Don't shift back and fire, if there's no one.
Yeah. So, um, regardless, you know, I think that when we have these discussions, it'd be nice to have you around just for input anyway, not, not for the engineering part of it, but.
Yep, I like it, thank you.
Yeah, that's what we like.
All right, you bring, you bring experience, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Appreciate you coming in.
You bet.
Thanks, John.
Okay, next thing on the agenda, we've got to sign the MS five thirty-five financial statement. Use to set the tax rate, this all been updated, Lee?
It has, I've received the information early in the week from the auditor, the, uh, audit is complete. This is the last piece that's, um, filled out by the, them, um, under the full cost of the audit, and, um, this is uploaded from the D R A, uh, from the auditor to the D R A portal, and this is what she uses to.
Set the tax rate.
Set the tax rate. It's one of the pieces, is one of the last remaining pieces, other than utility values that we're missing for, um, the final.
We typically just sign this board, we don't make a motion to sign this.
No, but it's information you should be aware of, because the.
And you sent us a copy of the five thirty-five, we can review it?
The actual?
Just the five thirty-five?
Did I send, did I send it as an attachment?
I didn't see it as of eleven.
Yeah, I said, I forwarded the, um.
I saw the con, like, three questions you had, and.
And the attachment of the five thirty-five was on there, yeah.
Okay, just today you did?
Just, yeah.
All right, I'm good with that.
It's good information, and.
Yeah, I'd like to look through it a little bit closer and check the, the numbers as well. Thank you, Lee.
Are we gonna be number one in the queue this year?
I hope so.
Lee is, uh, just for the record, uh, Lee is always prepared on it in a timely ma- fashion, and she's usually one or two in the queue, as far as getting distribution of our tax rate from the state.
That may, may, may or may not happen, because of the fact that we're in a rebattle, and one way I have the, um, utility values that we still have to stay at, and so.
It's always a kudo.
Does that actually have an impact on, like, five hour or anything?
It doesn't have, it doesn't really impact the tax rate, it just gives us, we have an early notice.
You do get it sooner?
Yes.
So.
I would thought that we were really small to say back?
No, it's.
No, each town is set differently, and they have, comply, have every single document in the portal. And the sooner you get in, the quicker you can set your tax rate.
Yeah.
There, I think this past, um, December, there were towns that hadn't set their tax rate in January and February of this year, which is, could be devastating if you don't have any surplus, cause you still have to pay your bills, and you're paying it now from your bank balance, not the tax revenue. So, by getting it in early, gives the, us the ability to get the tax bills out sooner, and you'll have thirty-five to sometimes forty days before your due.
The next thing on the agenda we're moved to is review the job description for the planning, uh, building and zoning office administrator. There's been a lot of work done on this the last couple of weeks, um, we actually did this earlier when Donna was gonna retire over on back, and there's some updates on here in red, I believe, right?
Yeah.
And we have the, uh, planning board and the zoning chairs here to discuss this with them.
So, I think they would prefer that we discuss that part of it in the non-public, but I provided them with the, uh, red item job description, and then Donna and I have worked together on the few changes that were recently do, uh, amended in twenty twenty-three. But what Donna did provide to the, uh, co-chairments of the boards, um, is a task that she, um, typically will go through, and I found that it was very helpful to, that might be a good tool for the next person coming in. Where the department, where this position is primarily a building department administrator, she's an administrator to several different support groups, which would be the planning board and the zoning board, and these tasks, um, I did revise it slightly to put this billing at the top, but it does outline several of the requirements that would, that individual coming in would have something to look at and have a guidance for what they need to do for those other boards and committees.
So, we'll bring this up.
Is there any feedback in public session here regarding the lists of tasks and all of that? I'm just kind of curious, like.
My, my only question would be, has Donna, has she, yeah, have Donna looked at this?
She has, yeah, yeah.
And we act, we, we've asked her to make sure that that was done.
A couple of different.
Cause we wanted to make sure that there was no gaps in things that she was doing.
Because again, yeah, her, her, uh, her, her breadth of responsibilities is pretty odd, pretty big when you look at what she's put as a task. One, one other comment would be the license and certification about a valid license?
Yeah.
That's odd, that's an obvious, cause she's gonna run to the registry.
I, I left it there, but I struck it out, because it was recommended by a chairman or one of the selectmen.
I was, just, just that, just the one, why does she have to, uh, can she, is she, does she necessarily have to have a license for a job?
She brings mylar, uh, plans to the, to the book Registry of Deeds in Concord, so, she would need a license to do that.
Well, I was entering back and forth, I said, and I was just, I was questioning that, as, as a requirement, I have no issue with that, if that's an issue, that's, that's fine.
I think that license should stay in there.
Okay, I have no issue with that.
And I hadn't thought about that part of it, but that's why this was open to discussion. And so, the only two things.
Can't take the train.
You can't, the only two individuals that can record at the registry are the surveyor and, uh, plant, um, municipal, um, employee. And Donna happens to be the one in this position that would take a mylar.
And that would be the reason for having license, so, no issue.
Oh, perfect, yeah.
I'm glad I left it in there.
Strike the M K comment.
Yeah.
Okay.
Also, my, my comment, Chuck Frost, um, on this, uh, Lee had given me an earlier version of this, uh, thing, and Donna had given me a job description, and Donna had given me an earlier version of this, uh.
Yeah.
Detailed task list, which I thought was pretty good, because.
It is, very good.
It gives a lot of detail in that, I think she did a good job for a new person coming in, they can, you, go by this and monthly see what needs to be done.
Right, right.
They think should go together, I believe.
Yeah, and that's how I worried it on the job description, that, uh, see, ongoing task list for B P Z Administrator, um.
Okay.
Listed separately.
Yeah, I brought, I brought that up, Chuck, and she highlighted to me that she had that in there already.
I think it's a great tool.
Because you wanna, you want a new applicant also to be able to look through things and say, oh, I can't do half of what's on that task list, or I can do it all, right? That's a big, there's a big difference there.
Yeah.
And I, my point was, if you just look at the job description, it's not comprehensive enough to really describe what the job is.
I agree, right.
But, in this day and age, we may not get a perfect candidate, we may get someone who's really green, and this will serve as a document as far as what they're responsible for. And they're gonna be working under the thumb of the town administrator if they're green.
Right.
And the only reason is, thank God, she's had some experience in the department, so she can, but there's a lot in here that has to be done, and it's gonna, maybe a learning curve for someone new.
So, through, uh, previous training, when we were advised to develop and review our job descriptions, they highly recommended that you don't get into too much detail, because if you put too much detail into the initial application, job description, then they would, they could look at that and say, oh, well, it's not my job description, and try to decline any additional delegated work. Whereas Donna was nice enough to develop the, um, tasks, and by really outlining and bullet items and whatnot, I think it is a good accessory to the job description itself.
On the job description, is there a bullet or a line item to see attached task lists?
Right there.
Okay, perfect.
And I guess one of the goals today is to see if we can get an ad out, and start recruiting as soon as possible.
After today, I hope tomorrow I can get that out in the paper and post it where I need it.
Okay, so you two gentlemen, you'll stay for now, I'll be after.
Uh, I will.
Yes. All right, so let's go on to the next thing on the agenda.
Okay.
I'm gonna review a bid for the, uh, heating and, heating and air conditioning, second floor of the town hall. I saw Nora Lamarche from the garden club at the transfer station this week. She says, Dave, you know what I'm gonna ask you? Um, in the summer, on the very hot days up there when they have their meetings, it does get a little bit additionally warm. And, uh, but with all the windows and doors closed, it's, it's actually comfortable a lot of time up there.
Is it also cold in the winter, huh?
In the winter.
That's just the way you're cold.
In the winter, the building stays on coldest days, about fifty-five degrees up there. So, without opening the doors to the new entryway, or the doors to the stairwell, which holds a lot of heat, it, uh, it, it's a little cool. But I will say, if you heat that up too much, and then you put a hundred people in there, you're gonna be opening windows in the middle of the winter, so. You have to be very careful that you don't increase the heat. So you have to be very careful that you don't increase the heat to like seventy degrees and then throw a hundred people in, you'd never be able to stand it. So it's gonna be something that's watching, I'm sure that Mary will, will help take care of that as she.
What, what did they were doing with the Asian stock spill when they had the air conditioning?
So, we've been asked for some air conditioning to help. You know, in the summer months when it heats just a little bit more and a little bit of heat in the winter, so you're only talking a few degrees. So the most efficient ways, I, I talked to two service guys about it, Dunbar and Fuel. And the other company was. I don't know why I'm drawing a blank now. Steve. Lee, what's the company I told you I, I called there?
Starts with an M.
Someone that did the heating service in here now, mechanical company.
The heating in here?
Manchester, that building.
In that building, it's, it starts with an M right there.
Mitsubishi's. Well, I'm thinking of that as we're talking anyway. But anyway, I get, the systems that we're looking at in there. Was about a five ton system is what they had suggested. And we were talking about using, upstairs, there's an old coat closet up in this corner. And putting the interior portion of the cooling system and heating system in there. And outside putting a condenser like we have on the other end of the building there. And when I spoke with Dunbar and Fuel about it, they said instead of putting one unit in there and then putting a trunk around trunk coming down through on the right-hand side of the main room. For duck work, they suggested putting one unit on this end, smaller size, and one unit on that end, smaller size. So you're heating cooling for both ends of the building and basically the two units would make up the one. So, and talking that through with him, that made good sense. There are a lot of units already on that other far corner. The, the main building on the first floor, the library has a unit there. And there's another unit outside there that takes care of both stories, on the first and second floor.
Of the addition.
Of the addition. I will tell you that the heat on the second floor almost never runs because the heat from the first one goes up the stairwell. The cooling is probably reverse of that. But that's just the way they're, they're set up.
Are they all currently all wall mount mini splits? Or are they something, are they cassette?
They're all wall mount right now.
They're all like this?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm trying to think of where they are in the.
Well, there's a, that vent system in the middle of the ceiling, isn't it?
So there's a, there's an old fashion, there's an old fashioned style vent on just the entryway, but the ones in the library are wall mounts. So I was thinking, I talked to JR about putting one up in the. Stage area and then one on this corner over here. Love to take care of it. So I have Dunbar and Fuel service contract for it now. Contractor hereby Smith's calling specification stall two. Fujitsu thirty K, high heat mini splits for the second floor of the town hall. Both units will be mounted on the east wall. One in the front of the room and one of the back of the room. So the east wall will be that wall.
Yeah.
So one would be over in this corner here and the other corner where the rest of the units are, the condensers is what I'm thinking. Outdoor units will be placed, one on each side of the new addition, all the wiring will be done by a licensed electrician. I asked him because he provided wiring for the. Police and fire included in that bid. He's got a total cost here of twenty-three thousand one ninety-two. Note, several ceiling fans would help move the air in the large room. And then he's got a payment schedule submitted by John Swomar, Dunbar and Fuel Service. I'm trying to think of Steve's name.
Do you want me to see if I can?
So do you have another quote?
I do. The other quote was just a verbal quote and I told my buddy writing, the guy passed away. He was not the owner of the company, he was the guy that did all the heating and air conditioning.
You're a tough negotiator.
I know. I did speak with Dave, the owner of the company, he said he would honor the quote for him.
Okay.
The bid came in at twenty-five thousand for the five ton unit that he was gonna put here in the corner, including all the duck work. But it did not include wiring, just like he didn't include it here.
Oh, that doesn't include wiring?
No, JR's does, but the bid from the other company did not include wiring.
Okay.
They don't have licensed electrician, they.
And you're talking duck work, not duckless?
The, the other system, the guy was gonna provide a duck work coming down the side of the building.
Okay.
On the second floor. It was gonna go from twenty-four inch to sixteen inch to twelve inch. Because as you push through the seventy foot room, you have to reduce the size of that duck. It was gonna be round circular with vents pointing out this way. One from that, from that closet area going straight out. So the condenser was gonna be outside for the five ton unit and then the other unit was gonna be mounted upstairs in that room.
And that's a single condenser for that? They can do five ton with a single?
That's what he said, yeah. Obviously bigger, but.
Yeah. And the, the other one there, JR's, that's, those are two different condensers, they're not running off the same?
That's what it says, one on each side.
Okay.
Which I think is probably a little bit better, if one goes down, you know, losing both.
Yeah.
Now.
It's the, the duck, the duck work on the backside where the storage room is, so the coat closet. And that room is gonna be, point into the.
If we go with JR's, it'll be mode duck work.
Okay, but the unit will be, that unit will be inside the, the main area.
That's right.
Okay, that's good.
One would be in the main area, the other one might be up by the stage area. It could either be right in front of the stage or there, straight up the wall, you can see out the window.
You know if there was any talk about, just because that room is pretty big, I know you can get ones that'll do two heads per compressor unit? Like if you did two fifteens instead of a single thirty?
Yeah.
Like actually almost do like the corners or something in the building. I wonder that, I wonder if that is an option just for distributing the.
Probably would be, but I would imagine the two heads would add a little bit.
It would probably add a little bit, but you're probably talking the same compressor unit outside.
Yes.
Same size and everything, but, but just two heads. Uh, two smaller heads, but yeah, it would increase the cost a little bit.
And we can, we can ask that to JR there.
Just because of the size, sometimes if you put one unit in one corner, you know, that'd be quite a temperature differential. I know you mentioned ceiling fans and whatnot, but.
So last year we went out to bid for that fire department. These are the two companies that came in the best price wise.
Yeah.
And we had another company that stepped out on us, so we went back to those two companies that gave us good pricing.
Yeah.
Both of them had worked on this building before too. So it was kind of important to stick with the two people that knows the building.
The prices, it's, it's competitive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like we did on the last one, he had the electrical and so we went with him, he's a local guy, knows the building well. And he does take care of our heating system on the first floor, which is oil.
Okay.
I originally talked with JR and Steve about bringing additional duck work up from the existing boiler. Up through right next to the old chimney chases in the back by the old stairwell. And then providing heat system to that and it still doesn't help you with the cooling issue. So by putting these, it takes care of the little bit of heat you need and the little bit of cooling.
Right.
We're only talking like ten or fifteen degrees on each end of it. So do we want to ask JR that question before we make a decision on the bid?
I would, yeah. I, I just like, just because of the size of the room?
So the question, Lee, would be if we kept the same condenser units, if we added two heads on each end of the building?
Yeah.
If we could, because like on this end of the building, we could run it in the stairwell area where you wouldn't even see the, you know, the.
Piping.
Piping.
Mm-hmm.
And on the other end of the building, you could run it behind the curtain. So you wouldn't see it there either.
Yeah, yeah, it's just a.
On the stairwell, yeah.
With electrical and freon.
So if we could ask him what the additional two heads would cost inside to distribute the. Flow of air and heat.
Yeah.
In the building.
So we're looking at four heads instead of just two?
On the inside, yeah.
Yeah, two per, two heads per unit. And I don't know whether Fujitsu does that, Fujitsu is a pretty top brand in that Mitsubishi's also very top brand. So they do, I do know they do multi-head units generally.
Yeah. In fact, I think the stairwell might be the multi-head unit, because there's only one outside condenser and then there's a unit on both floors.
Yeah, yeah, and a lot of times it doesn't add a whole lot of cost, you know, you do have the material.
Brookside Mechanical does have a bid.
Could you also?
Mechanical was twenty-five thousand.
Could you also ask, there's a low temperature limit on these that varies. Sometimes they're thirteen below zero, other times they're zero or five above. I'm curious which one he specked out.
The last one I did was fifteen, it doesn't.
Oh.
The last ones I did were fifteen below.
Okay.
Like on the entryway.
Okay, was it, okay, that, that would, we want to know because he could be, if you don't ask, you could get the five degree ones.
Right.
And then if it's zero, it doesn't heat, it shuts off.
Do you understand that question?
Yeah, yeah, I do.
Okay, so why don't we?
I have like six of these at home, so I know, I know it pretty well.
I know it raised our electric bill, we did this entryway substantially.
Yeah.
I was amazed how much it brought that building up.
Yeah.
Remember the price increases would come in?
Yeah.
We didn't plan on that for our solar panels.
We did, that was during the construction phase too, of course.
Okay, so those are the two bids, so I think if we ask those questions, who they are.
What's the, lastly, what's the brand of the, what was your other company?
Brookside.
Brookside Mechanical.
What's the brand of that one?
Mitsubishi.
That's Mitsubishi, huh?
That's what they supplied on that fire end over there. Lee, I want to put this back in the pile for you, Kelly.
Okay. Yeah, you can.
Terrible.
Yeah, but it is something that people have been asking for the last couple of years. It's something that we knew we had to do.
Yeah, we, yeah, we, we said we would address it as overtime, we wanted to see how it worked out without anything.
And it's actually working pretty well, because if you open up the doors to go into the stairwell, we don't leave them open when the public is in there because it's a fire stairwell. But if you open them up in advance of the meeting and then when you fill it with people, heats up pretty darn quick.
Make sure you have a morning meeting.
Okay. I had an interview of two new people for the transfer station this week. Oliver Plant was one of them. Maybe I gotta bolt up here. Yeah, they're tied together here.
I'm going to repeat this one together.
Well, there should be three here.
No, the third one's on my desk, he's not the one that was interviewed.
I know, but you're gonna send a thing to him, okay. And then Jacob Robertson, that's why I'm looking for the third one.
Okay.
So we interviewed these two people and they're both very young and seem to be willing to do the job. Both have good availability for the hours that we're doing, the four days a week that we're requiring.
Is this around thirty to thirty-four hours?
Yes, thirty-two to thirty-four, somewhere in there. They might get as low as twenty-eight. Both of them could work Saturdays, all, all three days during the week that we're open and all the day that we're off that we prep. And both have good transportation and Woody and I thought we should give them both a try. As, as we've been seeing, if we get one out of the two.
It's just attendants, no CDLs.
Just attendants and a level one, and she gave me the step here, so it would be my recommendation that we. Provide a job opportunity for both of these two people I just said.
You want to make a motion?
Yeah, so my motion is to hire Oliver Plant and Jacob Robertson at transfer station attendant, part-time, step one at eighteen ninety-four per hour. Which is a twenty twenty-five rate. And both of them seemed happy with the dollar amount. One had never worked before in his life and the other one works for one of the delivery companies and he's gonna fit it in between the nighttime deliveries he does. So I think one of these two will probably work out longer term for us, but I think it's a good try. We've had several older people that, it's hard to keep up with the job on there, really going through them, so.
Yeah, the thing is, it's a stepping stone too, I mean, sometimes these people will find a more full-time job with benefits and the thing is, we, you gotta encourage them to take that. And so it's, it's always gonna be revolving door, it's a challenge down there because it's only part-time, you don't have benefits and it's, you have to say it's not a big career opportunity. It's just a way to get experience in the workforce.
I did want to state, we have a third applicant, we'd like to just send him a notice for now, we're, we're good with these two.
Okay.
Uh, did you, you did interview the last one?
I didn't, I made a motion, so I need a second for the motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion has been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Okay, so we got these two people.
Is there anything to sign on here?
Um, I don't think there is. Okay, this is Lee's pile three. And that'll take care of that part of it. Now we're gonna review an email list update for a dot gov domain. Assessing Secretary Pat Bone.
Could you just give a little overview, are you, are you the best one to give an overview or should be?
Yeah, I actually typed it up in the memo. Um, so I had applied, well, maybe a year and a half, two years ago, Chris and I came to pull the board. Saying that we would be interested in applying for the dot gov domain. And there were several reasons for it, it's a more secure domain and it's only offered to government entities. And then after a recent cybersecurity training with Primex here in our building, they highly recommended that we try to get, go forward and convert our emails. To secure and protect the town. I'm sure several of you have read about town officials receiving an email that looked valid. That maybe changed an address, email address for banking information and wire transfer was done through. Thinking that they were dealing with the, the business they typically work with and it turns out it wasn't. So by converting to the gov domain, this hopefully will discourage any of the cybersecurity issues that we have. This is grant funded and so.
No yearly fee to it?
There'll be costs just like there is for any other emails, but that's going forward once we're established. The part that they're working with us through the five oh one C three grant application is that they would handle all the steps to get to that point. The conversion, the training and anything else that we might need, which is, I had a webinar with her on Monday and she had.
Just curious, when would this happen?
It's, we're actually on the active list now, so as soon as Chris comes back, we'll probably have her, she's supposed to be coming to look at our server and our technology.
Okay.
Here in the police department and we'll be moving forward with it very, very soon.
Would it be any requirement for hardware upgrades?
No, no, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, and how long, how long do you think transition will be, like one day turn on, turn off?
I don't know, because what I am asking for, there, we have several emails that are, don't work with the staffing, the way they're set up. So I will be making three changes to the different positions so that it's more focused on the job that they're doing. Rather than what they were handed, handed when they took the job. And by keeping it generic and specific to the department, it really makes things very easy in the turnover of someone.
Personnel.
So rather than have a, a name tied with a dot gov.
It's position.
It's a position, correct.
Okay.
So I would suspect that these are still gonna be hosted by Microsoft?
Yes, yes, she said that Microsoft would be.
And is there, I, I'm not familiar with that, there's actually implied security enhancements if you go with a dot gov email account versus a dot org?
Yeah. Yep.
So that must be just something that.
It's fairly new and Primax is on and pushing.
Can you put double protection on this? And then, so there's a possibility, this is what I would imagine, the, the email accounts may actually migrate over to the dot gov. But there'll be continuous forwarding probably for.
Six months or so.
Probably for quite a while.
Yeah, yeah.
Because a lot of times forwarding won't really. Cause a lot of times forwarding won't really cost you anything.
That's correct.
If anything.
Yep, yep.
Okay, um, so, yeah, I don't know about the transition, um, and whether there's. The dot org actually goes away right away because if it's a different email platform for the dot gov, you may actually have them both. Operational, active at the same time.
Correct, and when we, when I set up the shared emails through, for the few departments that have one email, like the selectmen.
Yeah.
That is exactly what it is, behind the scenes, you have another email, but when people see the front email, they're seeing the selectmen email. And then it gets dispersed to your personal email, so that's kind of similar to what we would do for the transition of dot org to dot gov. We'll have that behind the scenes and it will forward, but it also give you, they'll, they're supposed to, um, explain how we would. Put it in our email, you know, the signature page saying, please update my email, that, you know, they may have emailed you through the dot org.
Yeah.
But they're actually, you're gonna receive it in the dot gov, it's a forwarding email.
Okay, it's gonna, it'll be a little challenge just as we transition, I mean, people do this, I, I can see this happening all the time.
Yeah, so the only one that is really going to affect. Um, as I have one email in that entire list that has a name specific and that would be Patrick Baum. And, um, I would like to permission to change it to, I'm gonna say solid waste.
Solid waste.
Which is a department driven and.
You don't want a new transfer station?
It's too long, I think solid waste.
Were these recommendations from them at all?
No, no, they actually asked us for our list, and I had it set it up after going through a turnover in these offices. And having, and I saw the difficulties that I had moving it from Janet from Monden to, you know, Kyle Hall or to somebody else. It was easier to just identify it through an assessing, a bookkeeping, a building department, and it's been a lot easier, so the. Tech support goes behind the scenes and just changes the login name, username, and that's, you know, what the person sees is the department.
Yeah.
I was, I was getting emails from the town clerk and it had Linda's name on it.
So you had to change it in your.
Yeah, I changed mine.
Yes.
I just took a cargo and I do with Donna.
You do?
Yeah.
You, what do you have?
Barbara.
Well, you have to change it in your contacts.
Right.
It comes back to hers, Barbara, too.
No, but this, this, what, I, what you're doing is, is makes common sense, you, you go by position rather than person.
Correct.
Yes.
No problem.
And also the transfer from one person to another, um, they actually get the history of the, all the old address.
Right.
So any contacts, any communication that they had, that's the right thing to do, so.
Good. Okay, moving on to the next item agenda.
Can I just butt in for a second and then I'll just, just, just?
On that subject?
No, just, just, uh.
Uh, you can't butt in till the end, then. Okay.
Almost done.
Review email from Donna White regarding SB two eighty-one, building on a class six road. The effective date of this new, uh, ruling from the state is gonna be July first, twenty twenty-six. It will require a zoning amendment change at town meeting, um, there's some new rules coming down.
You know, I, I read that, and I think is we almost offer this, we've been offering the same thing, in other words, you have to put. Now, it goes that we don't want necessary plow and support the class six road, but they can build on it, we allow that now through the planning board.
Yeah, but you're gonna see that the requirements for the road are gonna be lessened is what you're gonna find.
Well, we, well, as I said, class six roads, we've allowed it by exception in the sense that we know, we're not gonna plow it. And, and, you know, it's, you, you have to maintain it, et cetera, et cetera.
One thing that they're making sure is that they sign off the town is not responsible, basically, which we already have that in place, as I've had for years, so. Some things are gonna change and some things are not gonna, this definitely is lightening up the red tape on a class six road. So, that being said, I, I could comment, one thing, I know, also noticed there's a requirement to have insurance. On the property according to this new, uh, uh, law.
If you give the responsibility up of the town, it's harder to get.
But I'm wondering how many insurance companies are gonna insure a house on a class six road when it doesn't have emergency services, so that.
They'll do it, but it's gonna be much higher right here.
Be much higher, but then the other question I had on that, what if a certain number of years from now? That, houses cannot be insured for some reason, what do you do then? They have no insurance, but yet there's still a house there, I'm thinking.
I think there's enough companies out there, they're gonna get it, but it's gonna cost them money, is what I've seen in the past.
I found the cancel it.
Right.
And the nice thing about this is it's made sure that it goes to the registry, so anybody buying that home or lot is gonna see this.
Gets recorded.
Where in the past, it hasn't always been recorded, so you could buy a house and not know.
Okay.
So they've got a provision in there that's gonna change.
It has to, it has to record that it's a class six road?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you will not town, town harmless if by signing it.
And, and it's similar procedure, which we have followed in this town for a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that going to have to be in the zoning regs or is that some, you know?
It's probably gonna be part of the zoning regs.
I think it does, it'd be a lot cleaner, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it would.
Yeah. That was item number seven, item number eight is similar, we have an email from Donna White. Um, Hampshire Municipal Association, the news on HB five seventy-seven. Regarding revised laws for accessing accessory dwelling units, the dos and don'ts. Uh, to those and what the town can tell you about them and what they can't, and there's a couple of size regulations on there. That are close to ours, they have a minimum and a maximum, uh, so we will need to adjust ours. The effective date of that one is July first, twenty twenty-five, and the, the thing about this, if it's a residential building lot. Regardless of size, it has to be allowed, so I know we had some stuff in there, size of lots and this and that.
Right.
That's changed over the years here in, in the town as well, but it's another one that we're gonna have to keep an eye on and make sure that our. Regulations meet that criteria, they're trying to have, I think, more housing available to people that need that.
Didn't, yeah, didn't Donna summarize the change that we would have to make?
Yeah, the last me and Donna summarized the change, it's very minor because of pretty much what we have now.
I think it's fifty square feet off, that we have attached and detached already.
Okay, right.
Right.
So.
So we should just be looking at that. March of twenty-sixth.
Right.
Yes.
Town meeting.
Yes.
Cause it used to be you had to have a certain sized lot, I think that restriction went away a few years back.
So I think our current is attached or detached structure, but this can be freestanding on its own.
Yeah.
The, the new rule.
And I was counting, cause detached would be freestanding.
Mm-hmm, no, that's not, that's a different piece of that. That attached to home.
Detached.
Or detached to a, another main structure, that's what our current.
Oh, yeah, like a garage or bar. Some other accessory unit, yes.
But now you can do it completely on its own, yeah.
Okay, you're right, Lean. Okay, um, we have a review email from Woody regarding two recent policies. Lean and I have done some background on this and gone back and forth and we have, um, some information here. We wanted to share with the board.
So these were the receipt of funds policy and the.
Disposition of.
Uh, sale of dis- disposed equipment.
Right, town property.
Yes.
Yeah, so the first, the first one, down at the bottom of it, when he got both the email and the hard copy. There were, um, notes down on the bottom, they couldn't read. And they didn't wanna sign the document, cause it started saying policies and edits and this. And all this is, is it's a, it's an area in Lean's computer to where she stores the file.
Yeah.
And it was printing out on both of the emailed ones and the ones that were hard copies, and so. We made it simple, we waited it out, and we took her copy of it so they can sign it without anything on it.
Okay.
So that was a simple fix, but, uh, Lean wanted to make you aware of it and make the board aware of it, so.
Why didn't he just state that in his refusal to sign letter?
We might never get to the bottom of that information.
Okay.
All right?
I wanted to ask that publicly.
And the other one, um, email response, um, was in reference to, um. Oh, I'm still working on the same one, I guess this was a different one, so this one was in reference to signing the policy. They had asked through the money, um, the petty cash money to be a fire-rated, um, secure place. So he has a file cabinet which is secure, so what we did is we said, well, either we need to change the policy or buy a. File cabinet that's fire-rated, and Lean and I and Joe Murray were in the office. And somebody come up with the idea of getting the money pouches at a fire rate, so these were nineteen ninety-nine, and now we solved that issue.
Brilliant.
We don't have to change the policy, it's easy.
You don't have to buy a fireproof safe.
So everybody can sign it.
Five hundred dollars.
And it was a simple, simple, um, face.
Show and tell?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, they're rated for forty, two hundred.
I'm not sure, he came up with the pouches, Joe Murray.
I did.
You did, so.
Cause you asked me.
Looked them up, we solved it in five minutes.
No, I asked, you asked me to order a, a, a fireproof case and all they had were the blue ones that you could take with you and what, with it's secure.
Just get one small ones, but it's not secure then, cause they could carry it off.
And then the smallest one that we could get that's heavy enough to be somewhat secure was four hundred and fifty dollars, so. Rather than go that route, because we already had a box bolted to the wall. I looked up fire-rated money bags and both things popped up, so I thought that would be good.
I asked Lean, I said, any other departments that need those, we can now provide them for them, but I guess the safes up here are fireproof, so.
They are, yep.
I think we're okay for the other departments. Uh, Woody had, uh, questioned or referenced the cost saving question for his department phone. I explained to him that I was with him, that you and Lean were going through all the different phone services. Um, he did request that he would like to keep the, um, answering service. For Dunbarton telephone, um, he'd used the other portable ones in the past. People either were deleting the messages, I talked about the passcode, you had brought up with me a bunch in a different passcode and. He, he referenced that he went through several of them not working properly, and would rather stay with that for the five dollars a month or whatever it is.
Right.
And I didn't have a big issue with that, and I went in front of the board people.
I thought he was, kinda sending his email back to the board to the support.
Yeah, we, so I'll just comment, Lean and I are on a, a little bit of a task here to look at all of the. Phone bills throughout the town, uh, we're looking at every single department, we're actually uncovering some areas where we. Can achieve some savings, but we need to make sure that it physically works and all of that. Um, so, it, we're not singling out anything out, we're looking at, we're looking at every department. And we do have, I, I don't think they've been looked at in a while, and with technology changes, we are gonna be able to propose some cost savings. And when you accumulate that from the library to the town hall, to the town office, to the transfer station, to the fire depart, everywhere. Um, we're, we're actually, it's all gonna add up.
Yeah.
Um, and so, to Mike's point, the comment there about, hey, that's just a little thing, why are you looking at this? It's not looked at in the narrow scope of just the transfer station, it's looked at in the broad scope of the town. And we're, I think we're gonna be successful at saving some recurring, recurring fees there. But, but we're not ready to, to release that to you yet, we wanna, we wanna still build that, yeah.
Yeah, that's great, anytime, anytime those bills can be looked at, it's just like your standard household bills, insurances and everything else, they need to be looked at.
Yeah, and it, and it's, and it's a bunch of work because there are different requirements in different buildings for different things like elevators and. Uh, you know, uh, hunt groups within the town office here, so there's some technology aspects to it too that.
I did make sure that he knew that we weren't nickel and dime in his department, this was, we're looking at all the different buildings.
Matter of fact, his probably had one of, some of the least opportunity, right, cause, um, actually, we are gonna be able to get rid of.
To, he, he said that he'd like to get rid of all of it.
Fax machine.
He does have a fax machine, but he does, he did say that most people now email him the quotes on the stuff, so. He said that if you want to get rid of that, you can.
Okay.
That's a telephone line then.
It's not, distinctive ring out there, so that was one that was done differently, that has distinctive ring, but it's, but that is, uh. That, that was seventy-two dollars a year, I mean, again, it just adds to the, to the big picture.
Get rid of all of them except the answering.
He had an anonymous call rejection, there's some other features that were on there that aren't necessary.
A lot of times people don't even know what's on there.
Absolutely, yeah, and he didn't care about a, a number of them.
None of them other than that answering.
Yeah, right, that's, we're okay with that.
Keep, I'm gonna say, keep working, thanks, that's great.
Well, and we'll be able, probably, uh, within a meeting or two, we'll be able to bring you a final report.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna, um, open up for public comment before we go to mailbox items, so we.
Oh, thank you.
Go ahead, now you can speak.
Uh, uh, well, 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 welcome. Alright, thanks. Yeah, yeah, I, I, um, I, I, I spoke to Mike, Mike earlier, uh.
Just for the recording, the name and address?
What?
Name and address for the recording?
John Stevens, Forty Winslow Road.
Perfect, thank you.
Old Home Day Committee.
Yes.
Old Home Day Committee.
Right, um, I, 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 the, the, uh, the, the potties versus the, um. The, the, uh, ba- bathrooms and whatnot, just, um, I, 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 I. I, I, I heard it's, 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 just in, um, a- as, uh. A- 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 as, uh, far as being able to clean up for, for, for the, for the food workers and whatnot. Uh, Hanneker Septic offers a, um, a, a washing, uh, 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 station. And i- i- in the past, uh, the, the town has paid the, um. The, the handi- handicap booth, would, would the town also be able to pay the, um, washing station?
Do you know how much it is?
No, I don't, but, 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 one, one, but, but, um. I would imagine that it's similar to, 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 to the, um.
How much time, do we have enough time to meet, to have one more meeting?
We've already paid a deposit for the handicap and the regular station, they're very, very affordable for the two, I'm surprised they're that low. But of course, it's only for one day, um, so.
So you're talking to washing stations, so instead of opening the building, I'm taking wash out there, I think it makes good sense.
It does, it does, I, I.
You know, especially doing ice cream and everything else and serving food out there.
Yeah, a- and, oh, Lean.
Yeah.
There, 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 there was talk a- a- at the last meeting, meeting about getting two. Two, two, uh, uh, of the standard, uh, stations which, uh, come out of our, the, 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 uh, the, the.
Which is what I think you had in the past, had two singles, and then they had the handicap one.
Is that what you're saying, John?
Yeah.
Two standards and, and then a handicap?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, cause I know we only saw one standard and one handicap.
Are you gonna put them all in one area, you're gonna put one single up that end, or are you doing them all over here again?
Uh, uh, um. Keep them all together, a- 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 at the last, last meeting, that was, that was discussed. And, and they, they are looking at putting them o- 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 over on the pa- pa- pavement there.
On the corner.
A- a- and, um.
The sun is in the middle.
A- a- and, uh, last, last, last year, it was on this end of pavement, uh. Last, last meeting, they were, they were looking at, at putting it, um, I don't know how to explain this.
Over by the bandstand stage?
No, they're gonna put it in the middle where the grass is and the start of the new parking area is, so it's in the middle. I mean, I don't think that that's really critical.
Picture's worth a thousand words. Rather than them being over in this area here, they, they were talking about putting them right over here. Cause, cause, cause with the axe thrower, he needs a whole lot of room, and this goes, goes down, downhill and whatnot. So.
I don't think it bothers us where they are.
No, no, I, I just, but I.
They had been over here before in the past.
Yeah, but it's a little bit far for a lot of the people that might be.
Don't make people jump around the axes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not always, I don't think, fun with the windows in front of a lot of people either.
Yeah, that, that's why I like to know a little bit more.
I, I, I thought they're better over here, but I don't care what you thought, yeah.
Is this where they were?
Yeah, in the past, they have.
Oh, really?
Oh. Cause it was in the shade, they're not sitting there baking in the sun too.
They'll be in the shade under the trees.
Yeah, 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 a- 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 and as far a- a- as the washing station, we're, um. We're still kinda like speaking about that a little bit.
You're probably gonna need a hose to hook to the outside spigot to the washing station, I would think.
Yeah.
Well, and that's, that's, uh. Well, and that's, that's another thing, so the get, the other option is we just hook up a hose to one of the outlets.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
It's not for the public, it's for the food handlers.
Oh.
Yeah, but I'm saying get the hose to go to the washing station.
Or skip the washing station and just use the hose, you know?
No, the washing station sounds like a good idea, I mean, you're talking about public safety, that's definitely a public safety, if you want a hamburger that hasn't been handled with dirty hands, I mean, it makes sense. I know you wear gloves, but it's still, it's it's a good, it's just a good thing to have out there.
A- 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 and that you 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 had had mentioned hand cleaning solution that you had.
Right, but still, the thing is, you get so much peril on your hands and then you touch your food, peril is exactly a a consumable.
Right, but.
That would be the worst case scenario, cause you're using gloves too.
Does, does the town still have any of those bottles?
Okay.
Call me tomorrow.
Yeah. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
It's a good way of reusing the peril from the old COVID days.
Okay, going on to mailbox items?
Yes.
Thank you, good night. We have a quote here from GMC Home Improvements, which is our kind of our town contractor that's been working with us. For recycling building repairs, the estimate's for eleven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifteen cents. It looks like there's two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifteen cents in materials, trim boards, caulking, fasteners, silicone.
I make motion that we approve the one thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifteen cents for the transfer station building repairs.
Well, second.
Motion made, second in all favor.
Aye.
This needs to be done before we paint the building and we're hoping to paint at least two sides on that building this year.
Do you know if that that guy showed up for the estimate or for the?
I don't know.
He was scheduled to go at the transfer station and the highway garage on Wednesday.
I don't know if you made it, Lean, I saw your emails, but I was around.
All right.
Budget expenditures for solid waste. Um, the overtime. Is five forty-eight seventy-eight remaining, which is about eleven hours, I think.
Nine hours, point nine.
Point nine, I think.
Per day, per week.
Point oh nine.
Point oh nine per week, yeah.
David, I'll just may address you on this. Thing is, um, he, we have a great assistant manager down there. If for any reason the the manager has, uh, has delayed on the road from car break, truck wreck down. On Saturdays, that assistant manager, he should be allowed to go home early, avoid the overtime and allow the qualified. Assistant manager to close the building on a Saturday afternoon. There's no reason the manager cannot, should not be having overtime every week. And I think that's wrong for the town. Overtime is but, has always been by exception for that department, it's not an emergency department. And the thing is, a manager should be able to manage his time appropriately, and that's the way I, that's the way I feel strongly about that.
Yeah. He is managing it very strongly. You got a guy that has lost two guys in the last month and a half here. Um, so he's trying to go through the guys that he has, make sure that they're up to pace. He's also has vacation days and scheduled Saturdays off. So before he does those days, he needs to make sure that the waste is delivered out of the buildings. Make sure his people coming into the buildings to do the crushing and everything else. Like next week, he's off this Saturday and he's off the whole following week. So he's worked all week diligently this week, he probably has two hours overtime. To make sure that that whole building is gonna process with the three remaining. Part-time employees that we have.
But i- i- has it been a crisis since January?
Um, I don't think his overtime has been a crisis, you're looking at an hour, hour and a half.
Every week.
Two hours?
Every week.
But he's lost guys, got guys, trained guys.
I don't know.
I mean.
Thing is, he's gotta rely on the assistant manager, we're paying that assistant manager appropriately, we gotta rely on him.
He has left Saturdays, I will tell you early.
Then I feel, I feel reassured, but I think, uh, he's gotta, he's gotta be told that try to manage his time a little more effectively. And you rely upon the assistant manager, which we're paying assistant manager wages.
Yeah. Now, I I know we talk a lot about the assistant manager, great guy, very helpful, but there's a lot of things you can't do down there as well, so.
But close on a Saturday should be not a problem.
Yeah, no, I agree with that.
Thank you.
But it is something we are working on.
Okay, thanks, I'll leave it there.
With the addition of, if these two new hires work out. And they actually are able to contribute, I would imagine that should relieve a lot of the. A lot of overtime pressure.
Yeah, we we just lost two people, but you gotta.
I mean, I don't have, I don't have the history of what.
They'll have, they'll have to be trained.
No, I know, yeah, but once they're on, once they're up and running.
Yeah, I would think so.
I would, I would think it would provide some relief.
The problem is, the reason we get somebody up and running, we get another guy leaving or out or calls in, doesn't show up.
It's your karma, you're.
I know.
You even said it when you had two applications, right?
Get one out of the two, we'll see how it goes.
Yeah.
But you're asking, this person's juggling an awful lot of stuff down there. And if you don't think he is, stop by and see the things. He's selling the product for us, he's delivering the product to these different places, he's moving the trash, transferring the trash, coming back, making sure the employees are there. He's going there, opening the facility before they're there and making sure that it's all ready to go. And there's, there's a lot of stuff going on down there.
Sure, yeah.
And and stop and talk to him if you don't think there is, there's a lot, and he is managing that very, very well, I think, for, for the resources he has. I mean, it's continually, people call in, they don't even call in telling me they're not showing up. So days he's planning on leaving early, you can't leave early because there's not help there and.
Yeah, I know, I heard that.
I don't wanna go on about it, but it, he is trying to manage it.
Yeah.
And I don't think. I wanna say there hasn't been many hours over two hours in a week that I can remember for a while. I'm only going off my memory, but, um, Hope gives me a list of it every week and we go over it. So, which I asked for that this week, so I could see where he's doing with his budget.
Okay.
I can't remember going over his budget on overtime either.
In the past?
Yeah. So. It's there and, uh. It is what it is, it's kind of a strange department. Next thing on here is we have an email response for a town attorney for continuance of the towing hearing.
I like to comment on that.
Okay.
We had the towing hearing that was conducted in this building on, uh, yesterday. Uh, chief, former chief of police who served as chairman, he listened to the complaint and the the appeal of the gentleman who was involved in the towing. He's gonna make a decision in two to three days. The hearing lasted for about an hour and a half. I thought the gentleman was very articulate, had some good points, but the thing is, regardless of what it, what, what, what states, he's gonna make a decision in two or three days. And it was attended by our town attorney, myself and the officer involved.
So there's actually, this isn't just a hearing of facts, it's actually a decision process?
It's a decision process, yes. The adjudicator is the chief and the, why former chief of police, the current chief's on vacation, so he had to designate a stand-in for him, which is perfectly acceptable. And former chief was more than, uh, seasoned as with chief experience, as you've commented on. And the gentleman made some interesting points and, uh, uh, chief is gonna take that into consideration. Former chief is gonna take that into consideration.
That's a lot of chief talk.
And what's? And what's the structure of a decision, what is he empowered to decide?
He basically has the statutes from the state of New Hampshire.
Okay.
And got the policy department, he's got the 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 effect, the ticket involved and the the statement provided by the. The person appealing.
Okay.
And he basically, he puts it all together, he makes his decision.
And is it a public decision?
It will, it can be, uh, but it was, this was a semi-closed hearing.
Okay, and I'm wondering, does he make a decision that then gets passed to the acting chief? So that the acting department can then decide how to proceed with the case?
No, it's basically, uh, lawyers advise it, will be, our communication with this individual is through our town attorney.
Yeah.
He'll make the decision, it'll pass through our town attorney to this individual. And this individual is always, has already put on, on the record that he's gonna pursue this in court.
Yeah.
And, uh, that's his decision.
Okay.
And, uh.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand this, what's the scope of the decision by the?
Well, the thing is.
Chair of this hearing?
Just that he can either accept it, accept or deny. And the thing is, uh, the gentleman was asking for reimbursement of the towing charges and an apology. And, uh, that's up to chief, uh, former chief, former chief again.
So that's what's being asked for?
Yes. And, uh, he felt there was a variety of violations of his civil liberties were in the, taken consideration, he had a big, um, discussion on.
Okay. And just for the public, this was an unregistered?
And this he, this, just for the public, this is public knowledge, I can say this. Uh, we had a, uh, not a resident of Dunbarton, but an individual was driving a vehicle, uh, that was not registered and no inspection sticker for over sixteen months. And the thing is, our officer pulled the vehicle over and, uh, it felt was, he couldn't determine the the safety of the vehicle, whether it could be safely driven on the road. So asked the, asked for a tow truck to come pull, take it away from, out of town. And denied the gentleman the opportunity to drive it home. And he provided support, uh, various tickets to the gentleman and had the vehicle towed. And, uh, I, I think he, the, everyone.
Let's keep it.
That's right, that's the facts.
They might ask for, uh.
Yeah, and the thing is, just, just to keep this in perspective, one, one last thing, the thing is, the officer involved relayed the incident, an incident to me where. In Merrimack, an officer, a police officer let someone go, gave him a warning. The, the vehicle driver hit and killed someone and the department got sued for letting their vehicle go, uh, it was unsafe.
Was that brought up at this hearing?
No, it was not. It was not a debate, it was, this was not a discussion.
Yeah.
It was just, uh, the gentleman could present his facts and that's all.
I would think that the chair of the hearing should. Have some precedent, uh, or some case history in terms of. But but, he probably, he probably knows.
He's got, he's got, he's got the, he's, he's got the town attorney, which we're paying for, obviously, who's gonna advise him appropriately, advise him, but the ultimate decision is in his hands.
Got it, okay.
And, uh, I don't wanna, I don't, I don't.
Thank you.
I don't wanna necessarily, uh, make his decision, it's up to him.
Yeah.
It'll be two to three days, I will, we'll, we'll share the decision with everyone else.
Okay. Item number D, highway block grants revenues update. Budget estimate was a hundred thousand dollars, final be, will be a hundred eleven, five, six, seven. That will be adjusted at tax rate setting in October.
Dave, would you, um, explain what a highway block grant is for my benefit?
It is a grant that we get from the state. Uh, we get thirty percent in July of twenty twenty-five, thirty percent in October of twenty twenty-five. Twenty percent in January of twenty twenty-six and twenty percent in April of twenty twenty-six. So this is a aid to the municipality, um, from the highway revenue. From Senate Bill SB three six seven. It became effective on July first, twenty fourteen. And each town gets a portion of that.
Is this come from, um, like gas tax or tolls or? I'm not sure what other revenue the highways would get.
Tells us how the funds dispersment's here, you'd have to go back to that original. Thing to tell you what it comes from here, I think.
Just kinda curious.
Planning community assistance.
Not that it's.
I'm not sure.
Not that it's important, but I'm, I'm gonna guess it's probably a combination of gas tax and tolls.
Well, si- since you drive a non-vehicle, maybe you should donate some.
I'm paying an extra hundred dollars annually to drive that.
Why?
Yeah, because I'm not paying gas tax.
Paying the gas, yeah.
Yes.
You're right.
Yes.
But you're on free charging stations.
What's that?
It's gas tax.
Yeah.
It's based on.
Oh, that's what that?
It's based on the linear footage of road.
The grant?
The town has.
Oh, oh, is that right? Oh, interesting, okay.
And it can only be, it can only be expended for maintenance of roads.
Oh.
God row repair, maintenance of the road.
Oh.
Tree clearing.
Oh, interesting.
Last thing on the mailbox, we have notice of federal emergency management. Jeff Jackson, Jeff Drager. Notice from federal emergency manager, she can have the names.
I know.
Agency regarding adoption of new FEMA flood study. This affect us at all, Lean?
Yes, it does, we've been going through it for a little over a year.
Yeah.
We've met all the criteria for public notice, we've provided the general public, um, updated maps for them to look through, um, via a link.
We had a few houses affected by it.
Yeah, all by Buckingham Road, but for the most part, the town of Dunbarton is not in any flood plain area. In the past, we had zero.
So how does this impact, um, a resident, is it, it puts them in a flood zone for their home insurance?
That's correct, yep. There's an avenue for them to apply through, um, insurance agents that are.
Yeah.
Um, approved through FEMA.
Yeah.
I'm gonna. Ask for public hearing one more time because there might not be as much public here when we're done coming back from our non-publics. Anybody have anything for public hearing? Okay, that being said, I'll close that portion of the meeting, I'm gonna bring it back for town administrator, if you have any info.
No, I guess what we covered today in public comment earlier in the five thirty-five, I'm gonna break up, let's make sure I didn't have anything else. On the set.
Um, bring it back to the board, it's like, when do you have anything for us, Dana?
No, we covered everything that I have.
I have one thing, I got a call from, uh, resident Stash Silver today. And, uh, this morning, he, he just completed some work of cleaning the hoods at the school. This is at the joint community center there.
Oh, nice.
And as he was cleaning the hoods, he noticed there was a new fire suppression system installed there. He said it was the worst piece of, either the guy was stupid, quote unquote, or incompetent as installing this. It was loose, someone could potentially get injured from it if it ever fired off because it was, it's pressurized, when it opens up, it could be thrown in someone's face. He was just had major concerns on that. So the thing is, I'm not sure, he wasn't sure which way to go, neither was I, so I called the school, I talked to the school, the clerk of the school. She said it was recently installed via the, the school SAU, the full district in Bow. And they're already on top of it, they're kinda, they're calling that installer, we just put that in and, uh, trying to correct the deficiencies. He said they didn't even clean up after themselves, there were metal shavings to an entire thing, and the thing is, just imagine a metal shaving getting into the food that you're cooking for kids. It's just a disaster waiting for happen, so. Stop, I called Stash back and I thanked him for the information, but, um, right now I'm gonna follow up with Shelley West, those who I talked to, and she's on top of it. They were already on top of it already because he kinda, Stash mentioned something to Janet, and Janet diligently talked to the front office. And, uh, but it was just poor workmanship and from, uh, Stash, that's his, that's his daily work as far as his knowledge, he knows his stuff. And I'll leave it at that. So I, I didn't require, didn't wanna wait to this meeting, cause I thought it was safety, so I just, and I planted it to where I thought I should go, school board.
Okay. Um, I've got a couple of things. Um, transfer station, we're part of a co-op there for our trash we bring down to Concord. That co-op had purchased a piece of land and is now selling that property. And our portion of that co-op money for the sale of the land will be coming back to the town of Dunbar. So we stayed, we'll be getting a substantial amount of money from them. I, I looked at it quickly, I think it was about thirty-eight thousand dollars, maybe our portion of it.
Is it that high?
It was, it was something like that, it was like a, it was like a two million dollar sale, but they had to put a new covert on the property and. That was eating up a bunch of the sale money and, um, so anyway, he did state that, uh, that money was coming back to us shortly here, so.
Where is the property being sold?
I think it was in Concord, next little solid waste there.
Okay.
I'm not a hundred percent sure, but the co-op bought that piece.
If it's over ten thousand, we have to have a public hearing to accept it for unanticipated revenue.
Yeah. He does have the dollar amount from the form he has there, so I guess we could get that from him and.
Seventy, you notice?
Yep.
We'll state the exact amount. So, just wanted to give you a heads up on that. Also, when they were working on replacing that, uh, pad at the highway garage. Um, they found that the, um, existing pumps had an old pad down below them. That old pad wasn't known to be under there. And so there may be an additional charge to get rid of, it's a very small pad. It's not the size it needed to be.
Concrete.
Way down below and it was concrete, the nice part about it is, um, there was no rebar in it because it was done so long ago. Uh, so it must've parted fairly easily, but there will be a little additional charge coming. Um, Jeff made me aware of it, so I figured I'd just pass it on to the board.
Correct.
It's not a big do or die thing, it was unforeseen and Jeff told me.
They've been working all week, I, I, I go by there all the time and you can always see him out there working.
Why do you go by there?
Cause I live down there.
That's all I have for the board this week. Um, other than that, Lean has reached out to the painters for both buildings, as she stated, and, uh.
For the two sides?
We'll get to look at some of those bids, we either do two sides of each building or do one building entirely and try and decide that with the money we have left. After we commit to that heat base, I'd say.
I'm gonna call them because he did say he would be able to stop and look at both.
No, we, we plan on having that, but that, that came in reasonable for the town hall.
I think so.
Yeah, I thought so too.
I know, I know that we had discussions because people were talking heating and cooling system, it was gonna be huge.
We didn't lower the, the maintenance line enough, because we knew that, we had two things going on, the gasoline pump and that, those are two items we were anticipating.
So I think it's, it's working out good.
Yeah.
I'm gonna make a motion that we go into non-public. Per hour, say ninety-one dash eight, colon, three, um, Roman numeral two, and A. At the request of John Charlie and Chuck Frost.
I'll second that.
What's your V, second?
Cause he is.
No, yes.
Oh, yes. We'll give Fred time to.
Two-minute recess, breakdown, short.
Thank you, Fred.